In order, I'd like to welcome everybody here. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, Alderman Betts is going to lead us in a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle for the liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to ask our clerk, Phil Duhrow, call.
Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman, roll call for a regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman dated October 13th, 2020. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Denby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor, let the record show a quorum of the board as present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you very much. First thing that we have is to approve our minutes from our special meeting of August 25th of 2020. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts to accept the minutes. Second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, second group of minutes is, it will be from the August 25th, 2020, emergency hurricane meeting dealing with Hurricane Laura. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Denby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last one of minutes is a regular meeting of our September 28th meeting, 2020. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion for those minutes. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by, I think it's a tie. I go, Alderman Smith made the motion, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we come to the section here, we have agenda items, and of course, any comments have got to be related to an agenda item that we have that's on our agenda. If you have that and you have any questions about anything on the agenda items, now would be a good time, we're going to just have public comments. We're not going to have and open up a public comment section, but any public comments from our public on any of these agenda items, I'd be glad to entertain those. Any questions? Mr. Ainsworth?
Oh, yes, actually, I was about, there's two items that I'd like to take something out. Um, one of the items, I'm not in number five, it looks like it's pretty well completed, maybe two months later. You know, as a citizen, I'm happy to see that some of the roads around town are being repaired, but I do have some concerns, and I'll be on the rest of them. And I've gone through a lot of research and questioning of the public record to determine, you know, what's going on here. There are four areas in town that are private property that have either heads and.
Two on the 25th, one on the 8th.
One case, a driveway was blacktop, the only driveway on the ground down in Blacktop. There's also a private parking lot in town that was removed and fixed. And then there are two other lots, this appear to be empty lots in town, that the reclaimed material that was taken from the road should understand from a question belongs to the town. And these two empty lots have material applied there, the reclaimed material. And of course, my concern is that there is in the Louisiana Constitution a prohibition against using public funds for private purposes. And each of these four private properties have been confirmed to be private property, the town has no relationship to them. And I've gotten reasons presented to me, my questions to the town about these properties. And it ranges from our garbage trucks did damage to some of them, or that the contractor may have parked his truck and led it up the property, and so they replaced it there. One of the properties on Breach, reclaimed the foot, that's not the case, there were more trucks over parked there from the construction activity. And according to the owner of the property, he simply went and asked the contractor while they were doing some work for some, and somehow ended up with. I do question why not, if the town damaged property, a private property, we have a lot of insurance to cover such things as that. And none was filed, and the reason given was $25,000 deducted. However, it doesn't change the fact that it's according to the Constitution, the town uses public funds for private property.
Okay, can I address your question so far? Okay, go ahead.
Please let me finish.
Okay.
The, if any is done or such things as that, then it has to meet what's referred to in the Cabela test, which requires it to have a public purpose for work. And two others, which are having no refer to it, but it does not meet that requirement. It has to meet all three of them. So none of the reasons that I could receive from the town even fit that. And I just wanted to go out and be on record for this whole, that using public funds and asking them, old private property is illegal.
Okay.
And we have no public record of any interchange between the town and the private property owners. We have no claims that have been made or documents based on that. We have no actions taken to retrieve this money, and I believe some action should be taken to retrieve it, because according to the Constitution, it's illegal. I believe that's enough for me to say, and I suppose, you know, when you get to decide that maybe some of that could be addressed.
I'd like to go and address your comment now.
Oh, well, let me get to my other.
Okay.
Which is in item number 10, which involves a presentation that you're going to give to change code enforcement in the town. And I really look forward to that, and some of the answers that I've received on it, I feel quite positive in terms of the partying that might be involved, certification and so on. And I'm happy to see that there is a full-time effort to do what we have done in the past, and that seems to be code enforcement as well. However, the Vidalia's a Larson Act, Larson Act, and it prescribes some things in there that seem to not be within this plan, and it may be, and it don't move. That is, number one, we have a duly-elected police chief, and it falls within the chief's responsibility to do all of the ordinance code enforcement, all of this thing, as well as the state statutes and so on. And there have been a couple of attorney general opinions that the police chief cannot, by agreement, give up any of his due responsibility to the mayor.
That's not the case here, but go ahead.
As my understanding, the mayor, that the new position is reported to the mayor. While I think it's a great idea, I personally believe that in order to be in compliance with the Larson Act, we're going to have to assign that position to the police department, and that would come as a recognition from that elected official to do that. So, and also, there are some attorney general opinions of whether or not, or how things of this nature are not to be, or the duties of the chief elected for him, are not to be infringed by some ordinance or whatever that the town may put in place.
Okay.
That's a fair observation.
Okay, good questions, and we'll answer those, I guess, when I do get to that report on both of those. Mr. King?
I've got a problem with my water here.
Okay, Mr. King, that'll be, that'll be, that's not on an agenda. We, I'll be glad to discuss it with you at length with our department.
They told me they were going to be on at this time.
No, I didn't.
I told you, they told me they were going to be on.
Okay, it's not on there, Mr. Warner, I'm sorry.
Well, why is it not on there?
Because that's not something to address here before a full council. It don't have, no action from the council is going to be required.
I've got a problem, I'm interested in you, why can't you address it?
Well, we can, Mr. King, look, it's not on the agenda, please, it's during public comments.
Why, when I come to your office, they told me they were going to be on.
Mr., I never told you it was going to be on the agenda. I told, Mr. King, now, we're going to move on now. Is there any other public comment on anything on the agenda? But I'll be glad to discuss that with the respective department. If we come to your house, whatever, it don't matter.
No, I want you to come to my house.
Okay.
I talked to Tony, told him.
Okay, that'd be fine. All right, anybody else on the, any agenda items have any comments?
It's open.
Okay, all right, no other questions, we're going to move on. We're going to start, Ms. Moke, if she'll give us our financial report.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of August 31st, 2020, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the two months ending August 31st, 2020, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of $9.1 million, of which 7 million is restricted funds in the hydro account, and 1.1 million in the sales tax fund. We have investments of 3.9 million, which the hydro reserve fund is 2.4 million, and then in the general fund, there's 1.5 million. We have total assets of 35.5 million, total liabilities of 5.7 million, for a fund balance of 29.8 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the two months ending August 31st, 2020, indicates combined revenues of 6.4 million are 17% of the total revenue, and we have 6.7 in expenditures are 19% of the total expenditures. For a net change in position of a negative $376,851. Just things to note in the financial statements, these things may or may not be in the financial statement, but they're, they do recognize that there's an increase in sales tax collections for July and August. Sales tax collected for those two months is over by the same time last year. September is slightly down from the previous year. Hydro royalty rebates, work is currently in progress to determine the amount of each customer's rebate. We are hopeful the rebates will go out by mid-November or early December. This will be the third rebate approved by this mayor's administration for a total amount of 2.7 million rebated to customers. The money is borrowed to cover the cost of the substation construction through August 31st, 2020. 780,000 has been borrowed to cover materials, engineering costs, and legal fees incurred. The Aldermen have been notified before the draws are made so that they can be aware of where the money is being spent. All costs are recorded as capital asset and as a liability on the balance sheet. The appraisals are complete for the right-of-ways and negotiations are pending. Construction at the city court building, construction is ongoing, but the mold cleanup is finished. We are waiting on a contractor to come and seal the windows before replacing ceiling tiles and installing flooring in the building. Audiovisual at the convention center, work to replace the worn-out system and upgrade the audiovisual system is complete at a cost of approximately $69,000, which is over budget by 3,000. This cost was funded by the occupancy tax collected to benefit the convention center. The balance in this fund is $273,000. Roadway improvements, at the end of August, roadway construction in the town is approximately 82% complete. The amount paid to date was 1.4 million of a $1.7 million contract. Currently, all paving has been completed on the allocated roads for this project, but the final invoice has not been received. Wastewater improvements, the construction is complete, but final payment has not been made. Slough pump station, the engineers are currently working on cost estimates. Town of Vidalia, 2019 flooding, bi-weekly meetings have been held since January of 2020 with FEMA as a means to keep the project flowing. To date, approximately $90,000 has been received from FEMA for the 75% of the amount needed to cover the cost of renting the pumps and high electric bills paid during the flood for fiber optic replacement along the riverfront and repairs to the Vidalia Canal. The town's cost is 25% of the estimated cost of repair. The only items left are costs related to sewer and roadway repairs. The Vidalia Port Facility, completion of the barge loading facility is almost complete. Only a few items are left to address. The construction cost is 100% funded by the state of Louisiana. However, the engineering costs are 100% funded by the town of Vidalia. CARES Act, the town of Vidalia has applied for federal reimbursements through the state of Louisiana CARES Act for expenses and costs related to COVID-19. The town has received $333,527. This money is for the actual cost of items, including sanitizers, masks, gloves, laptops, and COVID testing. The largest portion is based on payroll per public safety personnel and for employees on leave due to be in quarantine. The final application period ends on October 22nd. We have made our final application of expenses through September 30th, but we have not received final approval. The reimbursements are based on a first-come, first-served basis. Year-end audit, the auditors have scheduled to begin their fieldwork at City Hall during the week of October 26th through October 30th. The report is due to the legislative auditors by December 31st. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. There any questions from the Aldermen to Ms. Moke? But I want to.
I have something. I just want to say that I appreciate you for clarifying the CARES Act as far as the employees are concerned, because there was a few questions from employees of the city pertaining to whether these going to be checks cut out for them. But I thank you for clearing out what the purpose for the CARES Act and what those funds went towards. Thank you.
They are.
I want to put on to that, too, those checks will be, that you're talking about, because I had some people call me, those checks will be issued now to those officers or whoever were in place, or had they already been paid, or what's been?
Everybody's been paid.
Everybody's been paid.
So you're just reimbursing?
That's reimbursement, that's reimbursement to the town.
Reimbursement to the town.
Okay, and let me explain what he's talking about. When COVID first came out, they allowed every worker to be able to go home if they wanted to and get paid. And what would happen if you did that was, everybody would go home, you would have trash piling up and all that. So what we did is we incurred extra costs, we paid them, you know, overtime to come in, or they could go home and quarantine if they wanted to, that was their choice. And all the overtime, and a lot of those workers worked, and the cost we had was reimbursable. And that's why it's just $300,000. We didn't spend all that in PPE and things of that nature. So this is all that. All of our departments, they did a great job of keeping up with their hours, what was related to that, and also all the other stuff, and they've done a good job in reporting it. And we have a lot of municipalities that's way behind the curve, hadn't even filed a report yet, and here we are. We've already got a lot of our money. So that's hats off to Deborah and all the people working with you. Jennifer, they all did a good job, and all the department heads keeping and keeping track of, good job, really, really good.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been hearing from the reports about the playground we're supposed to get.
That.
Anything going on there?
That, I'll be glad, that's not, that's not on the agenda. I'd be glad to talk with you about that, that's, okay. All right, but we, you can call someone else, but I'll inform whoever you want to talk to on that. But has anybody else got a question on this, the Aldermen got a question on Ms. Moke's report? Okay, let's move on to number two, our occupational license. Okay, first one that we've got is Ms. Pamela J. Bell. She has novelty sales, this is a peddler, and they are making requests for their occupational license. I think they're going to be located at Family Dollar, is that where they're going to be? Okay. John said they've gone through the initial paperwork with the parish and the tax collection. Any questions on this? Do I hear a motion, we accept it?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next one we have is Simply Unique Flowers and Gifts LLC. This is going in at 1109 Carter Street, Suite 3. Looks like the owner is Ms. Jill Brown. It's going to be a retail floral shop. And do I hear a motion that we accept that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's our occupational, we have one signed application, and that's going to be for Simply Unique Flowers and Gifts. And they have a, they're going to have window vinyl, window stickers, and then the hanging sign to funder, funder their building. Any questions on that? And do I hear a motion, we accept that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Denby, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, next thing we have is board discussion and vote to approve a resolution accepting all bids for transformer-breaker additions, the substation project, and awarding the project to Ernest Broke Electrical LLC in an amount of 726,000. You've got the bids that came in, what they were at, and this is going to save, I think the closest one was, is going to save us a few hundred thousand dollars, and the engineering estimate was around 750, so that's coming in under, under what we expected. So do I hear a motion that we approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have one more, this in relation to the substation, it's board discussion and vote to approve a resolution accepting all bids for site work and transmission pad at Vidalia Industrial Park and awarding the project to Camo Construction in the amount of 149,000. There were two bids, you can see, that saved substantial amount of money. That bid's way lower than the other one that was put in. And I hear a motion, we accept this one?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Denby, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, number six is board discussion and vote to approve a resolution to appoint the mayor Buzz Craft as director and utility department head, Ricky Roth as alternate director, to represent the town of Vidalia on the LMGA Board of Directors. This is the Louisiana Municipal Gas Association, and all the member cities in the state of Louisiana, if you're a member of the Louisiana Municipal Gas Association, that's where we get our natural gas from, and the mayor serve as directors, and we have meetings once a month to discuss all the issues with that, and they require, usually they ask for the utility directors to be, as also one of the alternate directors, in case I can't be there, he could go and do that. And that's all that is, and they have to have that before we can vote or take part in any of the discussions during, at the LMGA. And that's, their offices are in the LMA office in Baton Rouge. So any questions? Do I hear a motion, we approve that resolution?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call?
A motion before the board offered by Alderman Betts and seconded by Alderman Smith is to approve a resolution to appoint Mayor Buzz Craft as director and utility department head, Ricky Roth as alternate director to represent town of Vidalia on the LMGA Board of Directors. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Denby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor, the vote is ayes for and ayes one, the motion passes.
Okay. All right, next we have board discussion and vote on approval of replacement hires for the Vidalia Police Department. We have Mr. Joshua Cole Hornsby as a full-time patrol officer, and Mary E. Wiley, full-time dispatcher, and I'm going to ask Chief Merrill if he wants to make any comments prior to any discussion.
Yeah, I just want to get a reading right now, we're three calls short. Tomorrow, I thought it was going to be two more short. I'm losing them to go to work at Lake Charles to make more money, so it's kind of putting us in a predicament. Being short three now, I figured out a way, I'm going to hire back one dispatcher and one patrol officer. I'm doing away with two of my positions, trying to cut back a little bit. I figured out a way to maybe have three people on each shift to do away with my shift lieutenant as far as 12, 12 years. So now it's going to come back to just three people on each shift, and hopefully, hopefully this is going to work, we'll try it out. But I'm only going to hire back one patrol officer now, one dispatcher, but I believe we're going to be two more short tomorrow.
I got a question. Question. Joe, I want to know, we had a guy named Chris King who ran for Alderman, who was also certified by the city of Vidalia, that went on military deployment, that never was hired back. We need officers, but yet we had a post-certified officer that was there to be hired, and we never did hire him, and I need to know why we would not have hired that man back. He's gone back now on another military deployment because he couldn't get a job here on the border, and I talked to him this past month, and I'd like to know why we would not have hired him since we're so desperate, what, just saying, since we're so desperate for officers, why would we not have hired him?
This is something that's been going executive session, but he didn't, he didn't leave because of military, he quit, he resigned to go to work. I believe it was for a military recruitment.
Okay, but why would we not, even though he resigned, why would we not have picked him back up and hired him where we needed these people? I just need to know why, a certified.
Executive session question?
An executive, because he resigned?
They talked about behind, not in the public, but we're talking about individuals and certain reasons, so.
Well, I mean, it's no reason, other than the fact you just told me he was on military deployment, he quit.
He wasn't on military deployment, he quit to go take a full-time job with a recruiting officer, that's not important.
I do think we're skirting on an executive session dealing with employment of an individual, and I, you know, if that's something.
I'm just asking a question about why we had a certified officer.
Well, I mean, for him to answer that, though, he might need to, there might be more to it.
It may be an executive question, but I just need to find the answers out. Because it is kind of disheartening to me that we had a guy that was post-certified, that we, the citizens of Vidalia, post-certified with our funds, but yet he couldn't get hired back. And I just wonder, if it's an executive session, then maybe we need to call one to see why, and that, that may be the case.
Well, we have to go through, that would be at the next meeting, because we got to go.
Right, I mean, I'm just saying.
And I have no problem with that, but that's something, that's, that's not.
That's personal issue, that.
That's fine, that's fine, if we need the executive session on it, we can.
Personnel matters. Personnel matters. Personnel matters.
Not personal.
Personal.
Okay, any questions, any other questions from the Alderman, Chief Merrill? Okay, do y'all want to take one at a time for vote, or do y'all want to do them all together? What's your pleasure?
I make a motion, we accept the.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Betts to accept both? Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith, you want to do a roll call?
Yes. Roll call.
Okay.
Before the board's a motion offered by Alderman Betts and seconded by Alderman Smith to accept the recommendations of Chief Merrill to hire Joshua Cole Hornsby, full-time patrol officer, and Mary E. Wiley, full-time dispatcher. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Denby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Probst?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor, the votes as follows, ayes are three, the nays are two, the motion passes.
Okay, all right, next item on our list, we have board discussion on adding an employee cost for area evac membership to the town benefit package for employees. We have representatives here with the area evac to discuss that. Basically, for somewhere between $6,000 and $7,000, our employees, right now, especially if they live outside the city limits, do not qualify under that umbrella that residents do, if they get flown by area evac, that they're covered anywhere in Fairhurt and Catahoula, Concordia, and Adams County. And Sherry is here with them. Jay, if you want to discuss, it link, this would be something the town would pay and basically give all those employees and their families, understand area evac access anywhere in the country, so I'm going to let, if Jay wants to add in, and Sherry wants to basically explain to the Alderman what that would be for the $6,000 or $7,000. It would save the employees. It would save the employees, uh, what is it, 35 or 45 dollars a year per family to be that, and so that's, uh, that's basically what we're asking for tonight, if they wanna add that to a benefit package.
I was gonna ask Sherry if she would just kind of explain exactly what the benefits are on this and the program, is sometimes a little misconception on how they're covered and where.
Okay, um, well, yeah, thank you, I'm Sherry, I, I'm with Air Evac.
Sherry, hold on, they, they fixing to give you a mic so people that's listening live can hear it, so, uh, if you'll let them give you that, I appreciate it.
Okay, again, I'm Sherry Ite, I'm with Air Evac Life Team. Um, I do know that we've had a blanket coverage put in place with the city of, um, Vidaya for quite some time now. And what that means is that if you are a resident within the city limits of Vidaya, you are covered from pickup locations of Adams County, Concordia Parish, or Catahoula Parish. If you are outside of those three parishes being airlifted, then that blanket coverage does not cover you unless you upgrade to the full membership. And what that means is the blanket coverage that the city pays for, the city residents can purchase the upgrade for either 35 dollars or 45 dollars a year to cover their entire household, to cover them across 38 states over 320 locations. 35 dollars is if you're a senior citizen, 45 dollars if you're not a senior citizen, to explain that. Currently, we have been offering a payroll deduction to the city of Vidaya employees, and if they again are a resident, it's 35 or 45 dollars of the city resident. If they're not a resident of Vidaya, then their rate is 60 dollars a year. So, to just simplify everything, what the city would actually do is they would play, pay a flat rate of 45 dollars because the city is loc, the city of Vidaya is located within the city limits, they can offer this, pay, add this to the benefit package for 45 dollars per employee plus their household, okay? So, basically, what you would be doing is buying a slot, if I'm not mistaken, I think we discussed, Jay, 156 employees?
That's, that's including the board.
Okay.
That's full-time, that's full and part-time.
Right. So, we, we, we were saying 156 employees at 45 dollars would be 7,020 dollars per year, to add that to the benefit package, regardless of where they live. The city will own the membership, so therefore, if the employee leaves, they lose the benefit. The new employee hired on gains that benefit. So, it's, it's taking it to where the employee's not paying for it. During the payroll deduction, the city would offer that as a benefit to their benefit package.
Okay, any questions, Sherry, on that?
Yeah, I got a question, uh, because I had, I had this, I've had this for, since y'all, y'all came.
Mm-hmm.
Do like the fact that we do give our citizens that, that thing, and then if they want the extra coverage, like I do, then for nowhere, no matter where I go, then if Air Evac's there, they can, they can pick me up. Are we just adding the employees that are, um, are, live outside the city limits, is that the purpose of this?
It's all of our employees that are on our payroll, yes. It's, it's a benefit package, basically.
Right, it would, it would include every employee regardless of where they live.
Yep, go ahead, John, I'm gonna ask a question.
Well, m, m, my question is, aren't the ones that in, in town already covered?
Go ahead.
But this is the, this is the, there's them, those that don't live in town, yet they're covered to be flown, true. That is true, if they're in Catahoula, Concordia, or in Adams County. But this is, a lot of employees still, regardless whether they're in the city limits, have the option to upgrade and pay that additional 35 dollars, so they can have coverage outside of those three parishes or, or county. And all over the United States, their whole family.
Correct.
And those people who are working for us who don't live in the city limits, and some of those are on the outskirts, some of them that, just some, as far as Jones, you know, those people would be covered and their families be covered. It's, it's, it's a benefit package, is what it is, and it's paying that difference that wouldn't go, uh, for the original, you know, being a Vidaya resident, it's an upgrade.
And Alderman Betts is, I believe, Sherry, you can correct me, the, the difference between what the town pays for citizens is they're covered in Concordia, Catahoula, and Adams County.
Correct.
The upgraded pay that the town employees are currently being payroll deducted for covers them anywhere. Is that right, is that the-
That's correct.
That would be, that's the difference between, yeah.
And you say it's normally 60 bucks, but you're gonna do it for 45? Is that what you're saying?
Due to the business being located within the city limits, the city of Vidaya can offer this as a benefit to their employees for 45 dollars. But the city will own the membership, okay?
How many employees do we have that are living outside the city?
Hmm, good many.
I don't, I don't have that number with me, Tommy.
I think actual, not, not counting, uh, part-time or Alderman, it's just, what, 140?
Well, I think Tommy was, you were asking-
How many people are not covered?
Outside.
How many people are not covered now, just like the people that want that extended coverage paid? That's what we've been doing for years. If they don't, if they don't want the basic, they wanna add it. Like John said, he added, it's 35 dollars. How many people are involved that we're talking about, that we're trying to?
Well, I don't know what the number is now, but what the town would be doing, though, for 45 dollars, you're buying a slot. So, it wouldn't, you know, basically, right, Sherry, I mean, if, if, if the employee's out of town and, and resigns, the new employee's in town, then it's, it's, that slot's paid for for 45 dollars.
As compared to 60?
Right.
Correct.
Because you have some employees actually doing his payroll deduct, and a, a, a lot of them might would, but they just might not can afford it, or want, I mean, or have the expense.
I understand, I understand.
So, I mean, it's, it's a benefit package.
Yeah. And Jay, I think when you and I looked at the last year roster from the payroll deduction from last year, didn't we count about 80 employees that-
I think it was 85, 85.
That's a good number, that's a good number of people.
Right.
My, my thought process is, we, um, have not budgeted for this already. So, I mean, I feel like we should go with what we already have as far as citizens, and stick with that, and then add it in the budget for next time.
Well, again, you can amend your budget to include that. That's why we bring it up. You can amend your budget before the end of the year, include it.
I say let's table it, think about it. Make a motion we table it.
I second.
Motion made by Alderman Probst to table it, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor say aye?
Roll call.
Roll call.
So, before the board's a motion to table the vote to add employee cost for Air Evac membership to the town benefit package. Motion before the board is to table it. Alderman Betts?
No.
Alderwoman Denby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Mayor, the votes as follows, yays are three, the nays are two, the motion to table passes.
Motion's table. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sherry. All right, next we have on, on our list is the update on the streets and sewer projects. I'm gonna start with sewers. Uh, there's one thing remaining punchline, uh, item on this. If there's anybody that's listening out there around Willis Street, Locust Street, that's having any kind of issues, uh, that's not been taken care of, that they would reach out to us. We certainly wanna make sure, before we pay any kind of retainage, that they take care of you and your yards are stored to what it's, uh, what it should be, and also your sewers function the way, the way it is. Uh, but that's, that's where we're at on that, and, uh, we've got a lot of things done. Uh, Ricky Roth is, uh, is Ricky here tonight? Yes. Ricky, you wanna tell them what we went ahead and did with the, uh, the sewer line that was causing us the problem in front of the upper elementary, uh, uh, by the levee? Y'all know we had that spot there that was, uh, a hole for a long time that we had barricaded, it was a really deep sewer line that required a lot of work. Uh, tell them what y'all found when you got down in there and what we did to fix it, and probably how much money was saved to, and do a change order on that.
Whenever they got down to the line, they dug the first time and found a, a crack along the top of the pipe. They replaced that section of pipe with a piece of PVC. Thought the, the fix was fine, they backfilled. Thought they were done, and then after the next rain, all that sand went into our sewer, so we had to dig it back up at a additional cost, obviously. After that, it was determined that it was a better, long-term fix to go ahead and line that section of pipe to where it would, it's never gonna be a problem again now. I don't remember the, the numbers for the bids. Uh, we saved a lot of money by not taking that chance and going ahead and fixing it permanently, and not respending more money.
Okay. But that, but the integrity of that line had cracks all through it? They run a camera through it, and it was really, really bad shape?
Yeah, we have a camera, a, a video of the entire line. It was, it wasn't just damaged in that one section, it was, it was gonna continue to be a problem and an expense for, for years to come. The ultimate solution was to line it.
And they did that as a fix, so. All right, I just update on that. Now, the streets, uh, the, one of the few things they've got list is a punch list, they've got some areas where there's some, uh, a little bit of reclaim, some asphalt where there's, it's piled, or small piles up that they didn't pick up. Uh, there's also the ring riders for some of the deeper holes in the road, you'll notice, that, that don't belong there. Those are utility services that they put those ring riders and concrete above those, bring them back up to make your road smoother. Uh, but, you know, basically, the, other than that, that's done, uh, you know, as before in our last meeting, our budget meeting, it was discussed to add some monies, uh, to our street project for some more street repair, and some of those streets that were, that's on my list are Lee Street, Miranda, Simonton, and Dotson Circle, are some of the streets that I think we need to look at, and any others that somebody might have, they want us to come look at that we might do. But I would like to address Mr. Ainsworth's, uh, uh, claim or observation about the, the reclaim in the asphalt. Uh, I'm very well familiar with the, the, uh, the reclaim in asphalt over behind the old Danny's Lounge. Uh, the contractor parked their machines there, they had breakdowns, and they actually cleaned their machines and whatever material was dropped there, town had no say in that. That was when they cleaned their machines, it's left there and done that way. The roads, and I will answer, I'm gonna answer a question with a question. If our town truck backs over your fence on your property, Mr. Ainsworth, or your mailbox, and the town tears that up, if it's on private property, who fixes it? And my question is, obviously, the town fixes it. Same thing here, whether it's a road, mailbox, or whatever it might be, the town has some responsibility to fix it. During 2018, when we had the, the water for 200-plus days, which is unprecedented, our roads in that area of District 1 deteriorated to a bad degree, and some around Elm Street did as well in Alabama, had some deterioration of the roads and traffic, uh, actually tore them up, and the heavier trucks did the most damage going through there. That through street at Esther Street, that was, a, a small section of that was basically gravel or dirt, and then it went out, and people drive all in the public, everybody drives through there like it's a through street, and they go out on St. Stephen's Church, it's parking lot, and our trucks would use that lot to go through and haul trash, and during that, during that seepage water, those roads were tore up to where they actually had to barricade off, they couldn't even use their parking lot. Now, I felt like that it was a responsibility of our town that we basically ate it into destruction of that road, and we fixed it. And I believe I would do it 100 times over, it was something that those people, just like, and, and, I'm just gonna say any resident that's here in this meeting tonight that pays utilities and taxes, they have, they have rights to have at least a, some kind of reasonable expectation to have roads that's safe to travel on. And all those people through there pay taxes, pay utility bills, and all this to the town. If it's, if it was not torn up, we would have not done anything with it. But we believe, and we had FEMA go through, we're gonna get reimbursement, we hope, we're still working on it, Ms. Moak told you, that we're getting reimbursement from the federal government on a lot of these streets. We, we're still working on that, there's still hoops we're having to jump through to get some of this reimbursement on the streets. We're starting to get a lot of this, and I'll inform the board as we do this. One of the reclaimed sections, we have some people on the shoulder of the road, uh, between the, our, our, our asphalt and their driveways, there's drop-off service, one citizen over on Florida, their drop was that far, they couldn't even hardly back out of their driveway, and it was basically in our shoulder of our road that we went in. Yes, we took some of the reclaim to make that a safe thing in front of the school there, the upper elementary on the backside, I think that's Florida. Yes, we did, we did go and repair some of those shoulders that were in bad need of repair. And the only other reclaim that I can tell you, now, whatever contractor did, if somebody wants to go look at all the reclaim we've got, we have got a railroad spur full of reclaim that goes, uh, just past the, uh, the fence where that sand used to be over on the railroad track, all the way through the back part of Palm Street is full of reclaim, asphalt, and different levels of dirt, sand, and mixture of that stuff. And we've used a large portion of that to build up our sewer ponds, which, by the way, Ricky, that's a great job y'all did out there, it looks wonderful, and saved a lot of money on that. But was over what they call the snack shack over on Martin Luther King, our trucks serviced those residences back there, it's not a paved gravel road. There was potholes that deep back there, and I told the street department, put some, put some reclaim in those holes, so our trucks and stuff servicing that, you know, we started making our drivers ride those things, and, uh, for safety, I feel like that they should have a good accessible road back there to do their work. And so, you know, that's my reason behind it, I stand behind it, I don't, I didn't do anything, I didn't think that the town tore up or made, made most of, or created most of the problem. And that's, if somebody wants to go further with that, they're welcome to do that, but that's in full transparency. Uh, if anything else, if a contractor hauled somewhere, somewhere else, there was trucks, uh, probably 30, 40 trucks a day running back and forth with that stuff, there was no way to keep up where it went. Somebody got a load somewhere there, there's no way, I can't tell you, so.
I think the thing is, if the, if the trash trucks tore up the parking lot, it interests is involved, not to-
But, but as, also, as you, $25,000 deductible, I doubt that, that you, you- well, it does, I mean, we, we gonna go file an insurance, it might have been a, a $2,000 repairs, it's a, okay. Anyway, I, I understand the question.
Yeah, the other thing on the reclaim on the shoulders, those easements, so that is acceptable.
Yeah.
When you start going on to private property with stuff, it's not acceptable. So, insurance should be claimed on that. I mean, if it, that's just my opinion, we should have filed. I mean, if it, that's just my opinion, we should have filed.
I'm trying, I think we asked the contractor what that, those costs were, and they wasn't even close to...
Yeah, should have filed it, that's my opinion.
Okay, alright. Alright, any other questions on that, on the road or sewer improvement? Anybody, Alderman have a question? Okay, if it's in your district and you have a street that you want us to look at, I mentioned the ones...
I got one, Palm Street. We got a big hole, a big barrel sitting right in the middle of the road on Palm Street. I've had all that call.
That's sewer related, that's something we're going to have to address, a sewer first before...
What are we going to do about it? I need to get an answer. I get calls all the time about it.
Okay. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. That's a sewer line just like that was over on Concordia? The same issues here, is that correct, Ricky? It's going, it's got the same, it's going to be deterioration? What we're going to do is wait, probably have to bid it out, to go down and see how bad that line is, how far it is, have to do the same thing, it's probably putting a liner in, I don't know how long, how far does it run down Palm Street? Good ways, doesn't it?
Manhole, manhole, I don't remember off top, I had like 300 foot.
It's, it's a pretty good section of sewer, but...
It's a good section of sewer, and it's, it's like Concordia is, you only see that one hole right now, there's going to be more of them.
Right.
We have to, we have to bid it out to get a contractor in here.
I will.
It's too deep for us to repair. And if we try to do a point repair and dig it up, by digging around it, we're just going to break the pipe even more, and we're going to call it more of a problem than we have right now. So, without bidding it out and going to a contractor...
Okay, that's, that's my question. Are we bidding it out? Are we working on, are we going to that process? Because you've determined what we need to do, and I keep getting calls, so I'm getting call after call.
About pricing.
We are, we are working on the bids, okay? That's what I need to tell them, we're working on a bid.
All my problems, we ran a camera through it, it was just such a bad disarray, we couldn't even get the two bunks on it, we just pulled it up.
We need, we need to address that before this river comes back up, though. Because I don't want it to continue, we need to put something on it. E A S P, quick. And I think we need to get it done, because they're complaining to me on it constantly, you know? So, if y'all can, put that on the forefront of everything, and let's try to get that fixed.
Okay. Any other questions on the street and sewer projects?
I know right by the corner of Riverside and Concordia, it's deteriorating right there at that stop sign.
They've been notified of that, it's on the punch list, for sure.
One other thing, right there by the IT building in Spruce. There's part of it covered, part of it's not with asphalt. There's a section over on the far side that's still not covered with asphalt.
There was one small section, and we were waiting, it's hard to get hard there.
Okay.
Go back to asphalt stop, but no, I'll get there.
Y'all going to go ahead and patch it?
Okay.
It's repaired, that name, we're ready to do that.
Alright. Okay. Alright, we're going to move on to item number 10 on our agenda, which is presentation by myself to, on planning changes to town code enforcement. I do want to premise this by telling you that Chief Merrill and I have talked at length on this. And as, as many of you know, he's had an officer who works shift work, who has been doing code enforcement for our town. And, you know, it's hard to do code enforcement if you're working at night and seeing things that's going on. It's usually happening during the day, and that's not a fault of theirs. However, you know, I did try to do something similar with this three or four years ago, but I think everybody's in agreement that we need to do something, because there was a lot of things getting through on us that, that just, that just shouldn't happen, our town can do better on, and I agree with that. And what we're thinking that we can do, and I'm just going to run through here, what, code enforcement, how I see it that we can do. It is not me taking authority away from Chief Merrill. Chief Merrill still has the authority for code enforcement, just like tomorrow, after, if we, that we go ahead and implement this, he still has that same authority inherently, whether or not he, we have somebody else doing it a full-time as a position, okay? And I'm going to explain more about why and how we got that set up, and why we can do that, and it's in our ordinance book as it is. But dealing with animals, you know, for example, this officer, if he's out and he sees animals, he will be able to pick up, you know, a phone and call our animal enforcement officer to come pick it up. On buildings, a lot of our buildings and residences need structure numberings, they need 911, that's back, actually, by code, they're supposed to have their, their address on it, and numberings, 911 numberings, a lot of our residences through the years, we don't have that. This is things that we can start implementing, that this person would be doing to get us all up in compliance with what's in here, that the people need to do as far as they're, and any way we can help them get, and it's a safety thing as far as 911 numbers and having all our buildings and all addresses put on them. Section 846 in our thing, actually calls for a building committee, it's something we don't have, that I will be investigating, look at. And, but as far as a code enforcement, he will be able to enforce our housing violations for, a lot of people say, look, I've got a neighbor next door, this league got trash everywhere. And by ordinance, they're not supposed to have trash everywhere. But we got to have somebody that can go by it. Disabled vehicles, whatever, you know, talking about overgrowth and grass too tall. This is somebody that can go by on a daily basis and look, see, and he can actually write the letters and send it to the residences or whoever the responsible parties are to make sure these things are addressed. And I know a lot of people's pet peeves, and one of mine too, but I don't get into it, because most people dare you to say something, is putting all their clippings and blowing their leaves in the streets. And throwing all their, I mean, throwing all their debris out in, out there, people do that. And if you have an officer at night working, and this guy's out there cutting grass during the day, it's, it's going to go by, nobody's going to say anything. This is something that a code enforcement officer being on, being mobile through our town on a daily basis can take care of and then start enforcing. Another thing that they will be doing, if they're around town, they see some construction going on, the building of a fence or something like that, they can stop and say, hey, have you got your permit? And then that way, because a lot of things are getting through the cracks as far as the town, that we don't know, if somebody builds a shed in their backyard, the town doesn't know about it. But this, if we have somebody that's looking for things on a daily basis all over town, we can make sure, before we get to, into a hurtful situation dealing with a fence, they built it, and it's not the code, guess what? It's a bad problem, not only for that person and the town, it's also for their neighbors around them. And we're trying to alleviate and start addressing a lot of these things the way we should. I know a lot of pet peeve people have, is the signs. We've seen an attorney, a new attorney putting signs all through our highways, up and down our highway. This guy will have the authority to go and pull it up. If it's not the code, he can pull it up. If we see people putting garage sale signs out there, and they don't come back and get them, he can take that sign or enter to them, to their address, hey, you didn't come get this. I don't have a problem with them putting it out there for a day or two, to have their garage sales, I'm fine with that. But these are a lot of things that he can do to help make our town cleaner and other way. We see, there's a couple places now that's got steel bars, that's got, you know, basically banners that's done, tore up and wrapped around the thing, that they are unsightly. And we, he can go and have those removed, and have people make them remove them. If he don't, then there's also citations he can be, he can handle. Peddlers, if there's any kind of businesses, there's peddlers out there that come to set up shop, and they're within the city limits of a day, he can stop them, ask them, hey, have you got occupational license? Did you get your sales tax? He can, he can run those people off if they don't have what they have responsible to do that. Other signs they can do, y'all remember the uproar we had with all the political signs? He, he'll have the authority, if somebody has political signs that are not where they're supposed to be, or the wrong size, he can go measure them, and he can pick them up and go take them to a place where that, that politician can go pick them up. Because we, we know what we went through this last time with elections. That'll be answered, that question will be taken out of our hands, or the alderman's hands, or mine, it'll be his. He'll be the one enforcing that sign code. And I think that will answer a lot of the questions, and if somebody does it, they have a certain amount of time, we'll address that to fix it. I think the grass cutting is all, something else, a lot of people, front and backyard, that he can stay on top of and make sure that those people have proper notice and done. Other things, it's in our ordinance book, you can't leave unsightly material within view of a public way, and that's our streets. If somebody's got things, now, what's deemed unsightly material might be, look pretty good some, ain't so good to others. And that's one of the things we'll have to determine and work through as we evolve and develop this code enforcement officer and what he does, and how, and what to look for. The commercial tree trims, if he sees a commercial contractor around town trimming trees, he can stop and say, hey, look, you can't put this on the side of the road, you have to take this off. You're the one responsible to it. Any kind of contractors are responsible for their own debris. You'd be surprised, I have caught Mississippi contractors coming and putting on trailers their trash in our dumpsters over on the riverfront. I've called them, I said, you can't do that. You can't, you just get back across the river with your trash. So, some of these things like this, we're trying to stop and take care of. Streets, sidewalks, and public places. Also, not only will he be looking for residence issues, I want this person also hold us to a higher standard as a town to start making our, if he sees alleys or right-of-ways that need cutting, that we haven't done, he has every right to tell, hey, mayor, you've got this alley back here that's horrible, you need to come fix it, of course. And that's something I think that he will have autonomy to be able to come and tell me, this is, you know, I went through there, and this is, this is the town responsibility, we need to get it cut, okay? So this is not just for us trying to make people do right, it's also to help us police what we need to do in some areas around town. You know, if we have, and one of the biggest problems we have, a lot of people complain about us estimating their utility bills sometime. Well, guess what? They, what they don't tell you is that they've got dogs, and their gate's locked, and we can't access those utilities. And there's, there's several of those people that want us to call them every time, we're going to come read their, you let us know when you come in, we'll come around and put our dogs up. Well, we shouldn't have to call every resident that has dogs to come, you know, we'll be on the phone all day trying to make appointments to have our meter readers go out of their way to go and read a meter, just because, you know, they got, going to put their dogs up. We need to have access to your meters, or you're going to have to take, you know, a chance of having your meter estimated. Of course, it'll work out, we don't overcharge, we try to estimate it, and then if it's, we true up, maybe at a time when we can actually read the meter. This will help, you know, this code enforcement, because that's part of code, they have to give us access to those utility meters. You know, one of the things now, code enforcement, the officer that I'm looking at using is Mr. Frank Dusson, of course, he is our town marshal, okay? Now, he cannot, during this time, if he, when we start this and implement this, he cannot do any of his marshal response and work, and keep up with these things. There's some more things there, but what I do want to clarify, and that's in our, this is our, our town ordinances for the town of Adalia, is talking about the power and authority of enforcement officials. And this, this is out of, and this is section 895. It says, "The town, through the mayor's office, may authorize public officers or agents or independent contractors to exercise any powers necessary to convenient, necessary to convenient, to carry out and effectuate the purposes and provisions of this article. Additionally, public officers or agents or independent contractors shall have the authority pursuant to this section to investigate the conditions of the premises to determine whether the premises are unfit for human habitation." It goes through all the other things that it goes through, and who's authorized to do that. And...
Will he be an independent operator?
Well, it could be somebody, if you, you could hire somebody independent to do code enforcement, but having, having an employee to do it, I think, is, is more conducive to do it. Now, and it does say, a public officer is, and this by definition, is, means any officer, public officer, public employee, or agent authorized by the state or the town to exercise the powers prescribed and the laws and ordinances governed by the provisions of this article. Again, this does not take Joey's inherent authority to enforce code. However, I do think that Chief Merrill is, now, what the town, code enforcement won't be doing is that they're answering domestic calls for any kind of crimes, anything, giving speeding tickets up there, even though he probably could, because he is post-certified, he could. But he's going to be concentrating on code and getting our town cleaned up and making sure that we are a lot cleaner municipalities. So, this is kind of, this is basically an outline that I'm giving you, the cost, it wouldn't be any cost to our general fund, other than maybe the cost of a unit of some sort to give him to be able to patrol, and documentation, whether it's tickets and computer to be able, because I don't want to intermix any of his responsibilities as marshal, which he does after hours, confuse it with code enforcement. And also, this is the other thing, is if he's a town marshal, he's elected. If he decides not to run for town marshal, or if somebody were to run against him and beat him, he's, his job is code enforcement. That's what we're looking to him for. And he is, again, he's post-certified. Now, the only thing we probably might have to do is, he might, would have to be commissioned through the police chief's office. I don't know that for sure, but we would do all those proper things to make sure that we're within compliance with all the state laws and also our laws, and within our ordinance. I think this is a good thing, I think it's something that will help us make our town cleaner. He'll be a number you can call if you've got a problem, you've got a neighbor whose yard grown up six foot in his head, or if you've got something that's been a nuisance to you as a resident. I think, I think Frank's a good man for the job, he's well, he's well-personable, I think he'll handle situations, I think he'll do a good job for our town. So I think we've got the right person, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, or I'll entertain any ideas on what they think, so. And I'll open that back up to our alderman, and also, if any of the public want to chip in too.
Well, the only thing is, is in the Larson Act, it has to be within the police department.
That's what I said.
We're under the Larson Act.
He might have to, he might have to commission.
He's got to be a police officer, basically. It says, "A mayor is a chief executive officer. Any department other than the police department with an elected chief of police must be created, abolished, merged, or consolidated by the board upon written recommendation of the mayor. He has the power to supervise and direct administration and operate all departments other than police department." So, you couldn't do that, basically, according to the Larson Act.
Well, Larson Act...
The chief of police is generally responsible for law enforcement in the municipality and is charged with the enforcement of all ordinances within the municipality and all applicable state laws. Basically, it has to go through the police department.
And, and we have, I've already told, we've already talked about it, and he's okay with it, that's what I'm saying. Joe and I had a long talk about this. He can concentrate on, on things that he's got to do as far as enforcing, you know, investigating crimes, you know, domestic disputes, traffic violations, a lot of these things. And like I said, he's, if he's short officers, and he's got somebody doing code enforcement, that's what I'm saying, he might have to commission Frank to be a code, that's all I'm saying. He'd be commissioned.
But his supervisor would be there?
Well, it, be or him, I mean, it basically says here that...
But in the Larson Act, it says his...
I understand it, but our, our ordinance says that through the mayor's, I can authorize public officers, and I'll be glad to give you all the numbers, and again, if it's something I can't do, I promise you I won't. And I'll, I'll have council read over this and do that. I know exactly which one, it's the, it's the, it's the 33.423, and that's, and that's what basically, it's basically the thing that, that Mr. Ainsworth sent the chief, he's sent it to me. It, it deals with the responsibility, and we're not taking away his responsibility, I'm not assuming that. What we're doing is, we're, his office isn't going to have to be the one to send out letters to these residences to cut their grass.
He would be budgeted in the police department.
He's budgeted under the general fund, but I mean...
He'd be budgeted in the police department, he has to be.
I, I, I'll verify that, but I, I mean, I'm not...
Nothing wrong with that, because he is post-certified, so he...
I understand.
If you do use him.
It, it, it's, it doesn't matter. All I want to say is, is that when he, and when he's out there working, you know, he, he's going to work closely with me on, because most of the complaints come in, you know, before this all happened, most of the complaints would come in here, and all I would say is, call the police department, I, I, ain't nothing I can do. Now, people can come in, I can't throw it off on the police chief and say, oh, you got to call the police chief, because I can't do anything, I can't tell anybody, go look, I can't do that. Is that, according to this and what I've read, I do have some say if somebody has, you know, a problem, that I can have somebody that I can have go look at it, that wouldn't be necessarily under the chief's discretion. Pardon? Well, I mean, he's going to be answering, he, he, all I'm saying is, if I get calls, I can call him and ask him to do that. And, and Joe and I have an agreement with each other to work... And, and, and again, we'll make sure we get that right as far as the handling of where it's going to be funded, where it's going to be done.
The other thing, as far as code enforcement, to be able to code enforce, you have to have some, some responsibility as far as what's it going to cost these people? What's the fine going to be? That's our problem, we're not, we're enforcing, maybe we're telling them, but they're not getting fined, they're not getting there, as far as I know, the fines are not being given. The, the responsibility should be, if you don't, we're going to do this, if you don't, we're going to do this. It finally got to the point where they just wrote tickets instead of code violations. But there shouldn't, we got to, we've got to establish a code violation and what it costs people when they don't obey those codes.
It's in our...
Because we've got some habitual, habitual.
It's in our book now.
I understand that. But I've got two or three in my neighborhood, I get calls on every day, almost, not every day, but all the time. Unbelievable, that are not being anything done to them. They just keep on doing it. Finally, finally, after four years. Four years later, that's all I'm saying, four years later, they finally got a ticket. I, I don't know who did, but I know one thing, they didn't stop, and it never stopped, and those things...
Okay, that's, that's, that's...
I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with that, I just want it enforced, some way we got to enforce it.
I'd like to, Mr. Carroll?
Finally. It finally went to a ticket process instead of the code process, you see what I'm saying?
Let, let, look, look. I'd like to have, I'd like to have order right now, because here's, look, this is, this is a step to fix these questions, and we can get into all this, we...
That's my point.
We, okay, and it's my point, that we're trying to fix it, and that's what I'm trying...
I see it.
Okay, so let's don't go and talk about what we didn't do and what we should have done. We're fixing it, okay? I hope everybody understands that. And that's what we're doing. We're moving forward. And, and we're gonna, and we, and we're going to get it right, so we're gonna work on all these other little issues about where it's gonna be funded and all that, we'll take care of and make sure it's done right. I guess what I would like to ask council is, is do they have a problem with getting some type of unit for Mr. Duson to use, you know, once we start implementing this and start doing it?
Well, that's what I was just about to say. If he has three officers, and he's potentially gonna be under the police department, if he has three officers and two more that may be quitting, it should be something available in the police department that could be used for their particular purpose.
His plans are to, to have somebody in those units, on the street, out on the highway, in good units, the safe units for his officers. And I, you know, again, this is for information. I want to bring it to the people, tell you what we're looking at doing. I think everybody's on board with what we're doing. Now, we just gotta make sure we implement it, and I'll, I'll bring it back to you next month, and tell you what we've done, and what we figured out from here. This is informational, letting everybody know that we are working on it, and all the issues that we have, whether it's the town stuff, our responsibility, we're, we're gonna do better. And so, that's what, that's what we're working on to do. So, as far as improve our community, make us better, okay? All right, let's move on from that. The next thing on the agenda is, I'm gonna need-
So, are we gonna come back to that, to know what the final outcome of this, number ten item is gonna be?
I, I, well, I think, I think everybody, I didn't hear anybody say they was against, against him doing the code enforcement. I mean, is anybody against it, about us improving this, this-
But we, we still need to determine where it's going.
Right.
And that doesn't need to be just enacted, because nobody said nothing. It's just, it either needs to be tabled and re-discussed. I'll say to make a motion to table and re-discuss next meeting.
All right. What questions, what questions do you want to answer?
I just need a second, so we can discuss it next meeting. Do you find out all your information?
Okay.
The budget and where it's gonna come from.
Right. So I'll make a motion, we table it, and re-discuss next meeting.
Well, there's no need to table it. This is just a presentation by the, by the mayor.
So it's not gonna be enacted, is what I'm saying.
He said that he would come back and-
I said I would come back, I'm not, because I still got to see what's available, what he's gonna need.
That's, that's fine.
I gotta see that. It's in the budget, his, his money's in the budget now. His salary's in the budget now.
As long as it's gonna be on the agenda next month.
And, and it, I mean, for us to implement that, I'm just letting the people know, because people are tired of having to go habitually and, and do this. And I am taking an, an active step to take care of it. So, I think, yes, Mr. Angworth?
Well, Buzz, I didn't mean to come here late or anything about it. I, I just simply wanted to provide for the board the information that I've researched and so on, and what's the question in the town ordinance. I think it's an excellent idea in, in the concept. I don't think that the position, however you create it, based on the Larson Act, which we can pursue, any ordinance that this town may make.
That's true.
So I would suggest, mainly, Attorney General opinion, with our special circumstances there, be, be thoughtful, and, and perhaps George's review of, of the Attorney General opinion on other issues and other places that are very simple. The, the main thing that, that I'm concerned about is, we do have an elected police chief. The Larson Act defines what his duties are, and he was elected to perform those duties. And in doing what, having another party reporting to the mayor, actually is, an agreement on his part to pass his duty on to someone else, which you can't do. The Larson Act says you can, as well as the Attorney General. So, it's, you know, I, I, I think it's a great idea, and hope that it's pursued and, and put in place. But I, I don't like, and it's based on what I believe to be fact, that, that it violates the Larson Act and Attorney General opinion on similar cases elsewhere. And the second thing to do is give another Attorney General opinion on our special circumstances, and let him give his opinion on whether he's collecting on.
I'll, I'll, I probably won't do Attorney General opinion. There's a lot of other municipalities all across the state that are Larson Act communities, and, you know, this is already, this is in our ordinance book, and, you know, I'll look at it and take that advisement with, with our attorney. Also, the LMA has staff attorneys that I'll talk with them, and get other municipalities that have a code enforcement officer, and I will talk to them, and, and I'll bring that back next time. And, but I, I think we're fine, just from what I've read in our, in our code of ordinances, but it's noted. So what we're gonna do now is, any other question, we're fixing to, I'm fixing to move to have a motion to go into executive session. Do I hear a motion? We go into executive session.
I make that motion?
Motion made by Alderman Demby. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye. You wanna do roll call? Do roll call.
Motion for the boards to enter into executive session to discuss investigative proceedings. A motion made by Alderwoman Demby, seconded by Alderman Betts. Alderman Betts?
Yes.
Alderwoman Demby?
Yes.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor, the vote on the motions, five yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Okay. I'd like, thank everybody for coming. You can stick around and, and stay if you like. When we come back out, all we're gonna do is adjourn. So, anyway, thank y'all for coming.
I make a motion to close the executive session, and you know, back into regular session.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Betts to exit, seconded by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, adjourned, second. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Alderman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.